Fourteenth, twenty fourteen Dixon County Commission meeting to order. Would you please all stand and join in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Our item to go to now is the approval of the agenda. And we do have some additions to the agenda. We'll need to add, we have a letter of appreciation that we're going to be giving out. We also have to consider the approval of materials on the bid for the Navarre Can Step Program. And then also, I'm kind of assuming that our county attorney will be here, but we have, we'll go ahead and have an executive session based on attorney-client privilege. And we'll have that at the end of the meeting. And so I would go ahead and move that we approve the agenda with those three additions.
Okay.
We have a motion, we have the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item we have is that of a consent agenda. This includes the minutes of August eleventh, the canvas for voting on Election Day, minutes of August seventh work session, and the regular meeting. We also have payroll of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. We also have fund expenditures of six hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, so we have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This time we'll go to Commissioner's comments and committee reports. Craig, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I did get a call from the Christian Myers. Doris Brown, is that her name, down in Hillberry?
Uh, that sounds familiar.
Yeah, she's contacted the community foundation on what we could do about the mail issue down there. And I said, the community foundation, you know, the only thing they could do is write a letter in support of the issue. I said, Jerry Moran, you know, said that there was nothing that they could do, which I prayed from the July fifth meeting, that it's an independent agency. And then you had a conversation with somebody from there that they were still working the issue. But that's something that's continuing to be an issue. So that's all, only thing I had.
Yeah. I think the lady, the post office lady at Harrington, you know, I think she's making an effort to try to resolve this situation. She seems to be engaged a little bit in it. And, but like I say, whether we can get the higher ups to agree to anything is something else. I did talk to the one lady from Jerry Moran's office, and she hadn't given up completely on it as far as them trying to, to get some kind of agreement to. But it still comes back to, and I don't understand this because it still comes back to, they think that some of those roads are not travelable in certain weather conditions. And it's not any different than any place else in our county, and FedEx and all the other people use that road. So, you know, it might make them drive around this section to stay on a gravel road in some cases. But everybody else is doing that in the rest of the county. So, you know, I just don't follow their logic that they have singled that out as. Next week I'll be attending the North Central Juvenile Meeting in Jackson. That's all.
About the only thing I have is I do serve and represent our county commission on the board for the Central Kansas Mental Health Group. And they're having their monthly meeting that's going to be taking place Monday. And so I'll be going over to Salina for that. And that's all I have for right now.
You want my word? We did work session one, the canvas votes.
Oh, okay, yes, we did have a, and that was, that was part of our consent agenda. But at nine o'clock, we had come in for our work-study session. But we did go into session just regarding the canvassing of the votes. And we did have a change. Just so I have the name and everything exact, Brad, would you want to go ahead and just mention the one vote that changed?
Keith Sprinkle got seven votes as opposed to three votes for write-in as originally reported.
Okay, so that would make him the clerk for New Bern Township.
Yeah, to be on the ballot, not the clerk.
Yeah, to be on the ballot.
To be on the ballot, yes. And so anyway, that was one change that we did have. And then other than that, we did go ahead and accept the certification of the votes that had been received. We also had a meeting this morning with department heads. And at those meetings, each department head just tells a little bit about what's going on in their particular area. And it just gives us a little bit of an overview of what's taking place in the county. And so it was more of an informational meeting. And we have those once a month, and those are open to the public also. Okay, I don't believe we have any proclamations or petitions. We do have some public hearings and budget hearings that are scheduled at eleven fifteen. Sometimes we go into the report. But before we do that, we were kind of in the middle of a discussion on whether to have that public hearing or whether to table that on that right-of-way. As far as the commission, do you have some questions, additional questions you want to bring up or issues before the public hearing? Or is it something where we do need more time to visit this location or visit with Gary County? And I know, Brad, you had mentioned, I mean, the research is in place. I mean, we have gone through some of the documentation, but.
We've gone through a lot of it, and I don't know if there's any more to go through. We've researched to clear back to the original development of that particular area in eighteen eighty-seven. I've got the documentation. I know that Dennis Cox has spent endless hours in Gary County doing the same. I don't know if there's any more research to be done, so.
Okay. And this has to do with a road that is, that has been used, but is not necessarily a county road, but also is partially in Dixon County and Gary County?
The issue today is just strictly about the two areas in yellow that are public right-of-way. And it has nothing to do with the other side of, on the county or anything else. It's just strictly whether to vacate those two sections or on Rock Springs Ranch property.
Right, the two yellow. Yeah, so we're not talking about the other issue. But that seems, we're not taking the issue that's affecting what you're here about. Is that an agreement on that?
Where are we going with that?
Well, no, the map there, the yellow road, you know, the one that comes back into the horse barns there that we're talking about. And then the one that there's never been any, over on the right side of the screen with the, which just shows part of the way. And it just doesn't even show that Gary County has any right-of-way there at all. Do you want to pull it back up, Brad?
We're basically, the hearing that we're supposed to have on that is just to turn those two areas back to Rock Springs authority.
Correct, yeah.
And whether you have a concern with us doing that or not, you know.
Yeah, we're not discussing the other issue. This road here, we're planning on vacating that. And this section right here that was, that has never been developed. Is that right, Brad? Yeah, that's the issue for us today.
Talking about the other stuff, but that's what the resolution would cover is to play that. And makes no decision on the other side of the hook.
Are either one of those roads, roads that you would have to use?
That short east part, yes.
The short east part, it would be.
There is a, there is a road right in here.
Yeah, that's a part of that that we're talking about.
Well, I didn't know, I've never been down here, so I'm not, there is a road here?
No.
In here?
But that little yellow, that is a travelable.
Now, is this part that Liberty has maintained before?
Yes.
How do they get, they have to come in across private property to get there?
Well, they were great in that whole time.
I know, but I mean, it's private property. I mean, when it shows here in Gary County.
I don't think that issue does.
Well, but it's in Gary County. Agreed on that?
Not really. Well, I mean, wait.
Well, who are you paying taxes to again? For this property here, that go to Gary County?
On the north is.
Yeah, okay, well, so it's in Gary County then. Because Liberty, well, to me, if you're paying taxes in Gary County to maintain that road, then they'd be the ones that should be maintaining it. What's the agreement between Gary County and Liberty Township? Is there anything in writing about that?
And we're kind of just doing this as discussion right now. But in just a couple of minutes, it'll be eleven fifteen, and then we'll have the public hearing. And so there'll be opportunity to go on record with comments in addition to being part of the official record. But it is helpful to have.
The little, the little yellow line, put your right though, that is on Rock Springs property, as far as we know.
Well, I mean, that whole order is Rock Springs property.
Yeah, we're talking here, I mean, over here.
Yeah.
And this all here is Rock Springs.
This is all Rock Springs property.
Right, clear over this.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, over to the kind of yellow line. The yellow line is what we show as public right-of-way in the corner of that, which would be half of the width of that road. Right there anyway, where it just cuts across that corner of the county.
And Cox, Gary County didn't show any right-of-way there.
On their side, I think.
I will say one thing. I was on a township board years ago, and we never ever cut that road. Eight years I served on township board, and I don't know how every township ever got over it. That never would go to township board.
Which township board were you on?
LeBonne.
You were on Liberty?
Yep.
Okay, it is eleven fifteen. Yes, you can sit down there. It is eleven fifteen, and this is when we have it scheduled for a public hearing. And this is regarding the vacation of the right-of-way on Liberty Township. And so at this time, I'll ask our administrator to kind of give a summary report. And after he does that, if there are any individuals that would want to make comments, we want to have opportunity for you to do that. And so if you'd please stand and if able, go over to the podium and give your name and address. So we have record of it for the clerk. And go ahead and make your comments, and we'll go from there and have some additional discussion. So Brad, if you'd go ahead and give a summary report, please.
Okay. This issue came about several months ago when we had the rains that came earlier this spring. And a small bridge, and we've got displayed up here in aerial photography of Rock Springs Ranch and Liberty Township in our county. And this small little thing that looks like a dog bone is a bridge, a small structure that's located at that location. That bridge washed out due to the high water. And Rock Springs Ranch staff had contacted us, the county, and wanted us to replace that bridge. And in normal procedure, we did some checking, we were preparing to do that. And we discovered that we had no documentation, and I'm streamlining things and kind of condensing them. We discovered that we could not find any current documentation that showed that that bridge was located on public right-of-way. As a matter of fact, what you're saying now is what our current two thousand and fourteen legal documents show in yellow is what the public right-of-way is in that section. And what you see on the west side of the section here is what we know is Yard Road. It comes from the county line and drives, if you've driven that road, you can follow it. It's underneath there and matches perfectly down to the section line and south. Over here, we have the road, and it's overlaid over top of what is a road there that is maintained by, and has been maintained as far as we know, by the Rock Springs Ranch staff and personnel. That goes from the county line here, which is this little dotted line, if you can see it. Gary County being here, Dickinson County here. Starts there and travels down to where it just stops abruptly for, to us as an unknown reason. Then there's a small little piece here that's a couple hundred feet long or so in the northeast corner of this Gary County here. Morse County is actually here, and this is the East County line with Dickinson County here. And this would be half of what we originally assumed would have been this road that followed up here, came back down, half of it typically would be in Gary County, half on the Dickinson County side, and went on east into Morse County and separated the Gary and Morse County line on east over Highway seventy-seven. We, the county engineer and myself, we conducted some, we put in a lot of hours researching this, registered deeds, and looking through newspaper articles, and going through our maps back as long as we had them. And the conclusion we came to was that, and I'm going to open up a different map here first. We pulled out the original road record from eighteen eighty-seven. And where, and I believe it was a hundred dollars at the time, a road right-of-way was purchased from the family that owned this, this section of property before Rock Springs Ranch. And at the time, the legal description, as near as we can pinpoint it, follows this purple line. Starts here, jogs down, up and over. And at the time, we think the creek probably crossed the creek there. And the descriptions are to the top of the hill to the oak tree, down to the bottom of the bluff. And I've got it here, I can read it, it's kind of interesting. Over to the, to the big stone on the side of the hill, and that's the way it's described, which is typical of that era. And then it says directly thirteen hundred and some feet directly over to the marker, to take place, the rock marker at the section corner. Our engineer has plotted that out on this map, and we think that's where the original road was. Well, obviously, as we can see, that doesn't match the roads today in what's there, and that's changed over the last century. So that led us to believe that possibly there was a newer road record somewhere in maybe the nineteen hundreds. We've been able to locate nothing. So that leads us again to assume that, or trying to determine how we came up with this right-of-way. We honestly don't have any solid records to determine how we came up with this or this. But we do know that in nineteen eighty-six, the state of Kansas came in, and those of us are, have any age to us, know that there was something called reappraisal that happened, and it was very popular at the time. And during reappraisal, the state redrew all the maps in the county. And when they redrew that, they highlighted the public right-of-way away from the private property for taxing purposes. We assume, and we've ran into this in other areas, the same situation, that they saw the road that was gravelled at the time, that Rock Springs Ranch had modified. It matches perfectly here, it goes up the side of this hill, and assumed that that was a public road. So they drew that on the map and left it there. Most probably assumed that the road, which is a good assumption, followed this little jog over into Gary County, came back and split the road here, and then they drew that one on there. We don't know for certain. None of us were there, obviously, but that's what we're assuming. Back to the issue with Rock Springs Ranch. We, that drew us to the, to this investigation. We found what I just explained. Rock Springs Ranch still had the issue of the bridge that was washed out. This is the only access to the high side of their property here, with the exception of a low-water crossing on the other side. They drastically needed a bridge. Long story short, as we reached an agreement with the Kansas Forest Foundation that we knew that there was a question that this may very well have been a public right-of-way at one time. We may have some interest in the ownership of that bridge, we may not. We didn't know for certain, but in the interest of being good stewards of the taxpayer's interest, we agreed with the Kansas Forest Foundation that we would go in and rehabilitate that bridge. The county would get it back up to good working order, which we have done. And at the same time, they would agree that once that's done, that they would assume ownership of it and maintain it from their own forward. They signed that agreement. We have engaged with that, with that, and part of that agreement is also that, once that's done, that they would, they would agree, and do agree, that this is their property on these two places. And that they would agree to allow that to be, would not object to having that vacated because they already and have maintained it historically for as long as we know. And that would clean up these records. One thing I kind of skipped over is back in the mid-eighties, Jim Hague was our county engineer at the time. Many of us know him. And I talked to Jim during this investigation, and Jim kind of chuckled. He said, yeah, I remember back in the eighties, we had this same exact scenario happen. The bridge washed out, we met with Rock Springs Ranch, we agreed that we'd repair it if they take it over. We did that, and it's survived since then up till now. But we have no documentation that that took place. And as we've all heard before, if it's not written down and documented, the file didn't happen. So we don't have anything to hang our hat on. But what we want to prevent from happening now, that is in two thousand and thirty or forty, this happens again, and we go through this whole process again. So we're trying to clean this up and document all this and get the right-of-way cleaned up, and that's what brings us to today.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? And we'll have more opportunity to have comments or questions.
Yeah. I guess I'd rather hear from the audience their concerns with us turning these two sections back to the authority of Rock Springs Ranch. I don't think turning the bridge over is a problem, but whether either one of those two roads, if we turn those back to Rock Springs Ranch or not.
And that had been mentioned earlier. If anyone that would want to make comments at this time, if you'd still step up to the podium, states your name and make your comments or ask your questions on what our discussion is about right now.
I'm Clyde Googler, and I have a lot of concern on this. That east little edge in there, why, what, why turn it back to Rock Springs? That's as much ours as it is theirs because it's on the county line.
Do you want to address that, Brad, in regards to the maintenance and responsibility?
Well, this is a question why. I mean, we never maintained it, to our knowledge, other than a mistake that was made by Liberty Township allegedly maintaining it one time when.
I guess my question is, does Liberty Township want to maintain it?
No.
If that's, I mean, that's.
I mean, Brian, it's here, I think that.
Yeah, there's an issue, and that's why I have an issue with a bridge, where the bridge crosses down there.
Right.
I don't know if you guys are familiar with.
Right, it's in Gary County.
Met out there and stuff, and I suppose that's where Clyde's going with it. If we abandon that piece to the right, then, then he's left on his own, you know. He has no right-of-way down. And then maybe his other point, I don't know if his other point is, is why give it to Rock Springs? Why, is that the assumption that it's all given to Rock Springs instead of splitting it down the middle?
Well, there's only a twenty-five-foot right-of-way there, am I correct?
Yeah, it would be split, and so half of it would go back to Clyde, and half of it would go back to the owner on our side of the county, which would be Rock Springs Ranch.
Oh, so you're not, we don't even.
We can't do the other side of this, you know. And from, maybe I left that out, but from talking to Dennis Cox, who was the road supervisor at Gary County, he has done the same research I have done, and he can locate nothing that shows that that's a public right-of-way on their side. So, although it's a, I guess, a path for best description that is possible with a truck or farmers and stuff, and they've used that. The question, the legal question for us is, is it public right? That's what we have to deal with, so. And he can locate nothing on that side of the county that reflects that.
How does it affect anybody if it's closed or given over to them?
We have no way into our property.
Okay. So you can go on that little line that goes up and around if that, how long is that?
We're talking this section right here.
Yeah.
And could you please give your name too? Shall we have this?
I'm Jewel Starver.
Okay.
I'm trying to move over now.
Well, I'm just concerned about what difference does it make if it is closed? And if you can't give it to your property, I think that makes a pretty big difference.
But if you, let me ask you this then, Brad. Does Gary County have it as a right-of-way?
No.
Yeah.
And I haven't been over there, and maybe Brad or Clyde can answer the question. But I think what I was told upon a call from the Rock Springs director is that this is all trees, and the actual road or path that is travelable is on that side of your side fence. And I don't agree.
No, no, it's right up.
Is there a fence through there?
On each side.
On each side?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's probably, maybe fifty, more than twenty-five feet.
Yeah. Well, this shows a fifty-foot right-of-way. Typically, fifty-foot would be twenty-five on each side. I don't know on this one, since we have no documentation, whether this is fifty feet on ours or the other side. But what you're saying, it could be, I don't know.
Was that yellow line not in the right place there? Are you saying that the yellow line is, is right on the dotted line?
It's right on the section line.
And then it jogs up around there, is that where?
And then, and then when it jogs up, then it definitely does get into Gary County there, so.
But if I understand you guys correctly, if you think that's roughly eighty feet, if it were vacated, that would give you forty feet on your side of property to get through there, would it not?
So you're saying there is a fence right here?
There's a fence on each side of that.
Well, I'm saying right here, this yellow line is, there's a fence here. And then it goes up, and it stays on, stay like this all the way across? Or does it go up, jog up here on this line here?
That, that would go straight through.
What's that?
That would go straight through, basically. I don't understand that yellow line.
Well, that's, that's the right-of-way. That's what we're, the state determined that was our right-of-way. And there's, and we're just assuming it's a twenty-five-foot right-of-way. And then, and then when they did the reappraisal, and it just ended there. That's, and this is just cleaning up our map. Same way over here, you know, this is what the state, when they re, did the reappraisal in eighty-six. But I, my problem is, Gary County has nothing showing that they have a right-of-way there. Is that correct, Brad?
That's what Dennis told me, yeah.
Now, if we would go ahead and abandon the road, Mr. Googler would need to have permission from Rock Springs to have access on that road, and they would have to maintain, do any maintenance. I mean, it's his property where he, once he gets up there above the county line, it's his property. So he'd be able to drive or do whatever he wanted to there. It's just a matter of the townships. The county aren't responsible for the road, so it would be pretty low maintenance. But I mean, he would have access if Rock Springs let him drive through that.
I suppose, but then he has the issue of crossing that creek, that string there. There's a major problem there. And then another issue down where you put that new bridge in. If we can't get across there.
Well, that was never our property to begin with. We.
Well, you took the responsibility of putting the bridge in.
Well, and that was to clean it up. Well, and that was to clean it up, due to the fact is, it should have been taken care of in 86.
In my understanding, from talking to Mike Spooner, to Rock Springs Ranch, he's the director, they're willing to give you permission to cross that bridge, and I think you would say, maybe, that they would have an issue with that, so.
And have a right-of-
I guess it's other words, well, we'll be good neighbors, you can cross wherever you want to, so.
I feel since you did the, that worked on the bridge, that should have been, your responsibilities to get that permission to, to use that bridge.
We can't do that.
Can't do.
Or why'd you do the bridge in?
Well, I guess nobody feels unpunished, but we did it because we felt like we had some responsibility there.
You don't have responsibility on this other shit?
To get up the hill?
Well, not in Gary County.
We don't have.
Well, and Dixon, yes. And Black Dog.
Up this hill right here?
Yeah.
We don't have anything that shows that there's a definite right-of-way there, so. And it is a good road, and Rock Springs Ranch, who's the property owner, hasn't asked for us to do anything different, they maintain the road. I think it could be easily solved by just meeting with Rock Springs and having an agreement written that you guys will have permission to go there and follow it with registered deeds, would be my suggestion, if I were in your shoes, so.
There is another property owner there that has absolutely no, no way to get in either way, if they can use that.
Well, they could do the same thing, get an agreement with them. If I, if I own property, well, that's what I would, that's what I would feel, so.
Is there anything that says that we have, that, that, that the county or township has to provide access to property, right?
No.
There is. You have, you can't be landlocked. You have to have access to your property.
But there's something that says we have, the township has to provide, you know, it's like if I have a somewhere, I have to go off to other people's property to get to it, I can have egress and egress, but the township doesn't have to provide me with a way to get into it?
You don't really have to.
You know, like say you have to cross somebody else, you know, if you only have one way to get in off a public road, you know, you gotta have to let them have egress and regress, but they don't have to maintain that road.
Well, I'm saying we need a way in.
Yeah, well.
Plus, plus the other person that owns the track, didn't they?
Well-
And I think we've provided the access by doing the bridge for both Rock Springs Ranch and you guys, or anybody else that needs to go up there.
Not legally, this is not documented.
That's what I'm saying, all you gotta do is document it, check yourself.
Yeah, I, I mentioned that earlier, I think right now would be the time to do it, because, you know, get a written agreement that, that you can use that road, because it really is on Rock Springs property. But, but they're willing to let you do that.
You don't want the government getting involved in your private affairs, agreeing with them, they want you to get involved, the town, they can't. That's not the government's position, but I, I guess we paved the way, no other intent, that Rock Springs Ranch would be more than likely to give you access, that's what they told us, they said that they would do that, so.
You shouldn't have on that, on that.
Well, we were definitely-
He said, "We were good neighbors," but he never said anything about giving us access on that road. In fact, we don't believe that was the county road at that time.
Well, it seems like that'd be the next step, to go ahead and work with them, while they're agreeable, and I think they would, you know, as they refer to you as good neighbors, I think they would be good neighbors to work with you on that. And that way, it's in writing, so there's no guesswork decades from now. And I guess that's what you're suggesting, Brad, was that we get the documentation in place-
If I were in the situation, that's what I would do, yes.
-so it's clearly defined, and that not only helps the county, but it helps Rock Springs and the property owner just to know, this is what the intent is, and it's in writing.
Well, that, when we fixed the bridge, that was our intent, that, that public could use, use, use that road to get-
I think it should have been documented, them to have pushed it off on this.
Well, it wasn't our place to document it though.
You said that was your idea.
We have documented the interests of the county, we did that by agreement. We cannot legally document your interests. We can't pay our attorney to draft an agreement that benefits you that way, that, that, we can't do that, so.
Are there other questions or concerns? I mean, I, I mean, I think we've heard your side, and I appreciate that, and we did want to hear from you, but, but also, are there others that want to make comment on this?
We could postpone this and see whether, if you want to pursue, you get an agreement with them before we vacate, but, you know, I don't know that it's going to make any difference, but, but if, you know, if you want us to wait until you get your agreement in place with them, which I think they'd be willing to do, because, like I say, we kind of, with all the discussions we've had, they, they don't intend on closing that road to the public, I don't, they never did indicate that.
No, as a matter of fact, I'm certain maybe they could, just the opposite, that they're willing to provide a good one's access, but that's what Mike Spooner told me, so.
Craig, do you have a comment or idea on this, or? That you want to mention?
Well, it seems like the simplest way to do it, we'd just go to Rock Springs and say, "I want in writing that we have access to this, and you people have said that they had said it would be okay, as far as you're concerned." So, he would just need to make sure that it's okay with them.
And I guess it goes back to a matter of, of next step, if, if we want to go ahead and take action on this, or if we want to wait a, a week or two to get this documentation in place between Googlers and Rock Springs.
I don't see postponing as going to have any effect on what the decision is, because we have no authority over them.
That's true. Are there any other comments before I close the public hearing? Okay, at this time, the public hearing is closed regarding the right-of-way on this particular road, or two roads that are shown on the map. So, at this time now, it'd be up for the commission to consider a motion or to table any action on this.
I know that we tabled this until maybe a later date, when we find out whether any other actions take place on it that would change our mind, I guess.
Do you have a specific time, just so it doesn't, wouldn't go indefinitely? We're at the 14th of-
Let's see if we can set a date, hopefully we wouldn't have to send out notices again, because we spent, you know, we sent out several hundred notices to everybody that owns and lives within five miles. Today's date, I assume if we, if we publish the date today, we probably wouldn't have to send those out again, would we do?
That's true.
Yeah. That'd save us postage and handling and staff time not to send those out again, if we tell them what, what the date and time would be today.
If we did that, it's just a matter of maybe two weeks or three weeks, I don't want to push out-
No, I think two weeks is adequate.
So, that would be part of your motion, that we would make this on the 28th of August?
Yeah.
I'd go ahead and second that motion, and base just a little bit on the fact, I mean, I think Craig made a good point, but maybe that kind of relieves a little bit of pressure on the situation, to give time to have that conversation, in case there is any new information that comes up. We have the motion and the second, that we tabled this to the 28th meeting. Any further discussion or question from the commission? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries two to one.
And that would give the Googlers time to contact Rock Springs Ranch, to give them an agreement in place to secure their access?
And I think Craig made a good point, we really, you know, Rock Springs will be able to act independently from what we discussed, but it's, you know, gives time to present that information, and just maybe either get something that you're comfortable with them in writing. And if there are any additional comments, I mean, don't hesitate to give us a call too, between now and the 28th, and we'll take it up at that time. Okay, the next item we have, this is another budget hearing. This is for the Dixon County Rural Fire District Number Two Budget for 2015. And at this time, I'll go ahead and open that hearing. Brad, do you want to give a little preliminary information on that, please?
I'm probably going to have to defer to, well, bars. This is the first history, first hearing, hearing for the first budget for the new fire district number two, which encompasses the Hope and Devour area that was created earlier this year. And this basically will get them a little bit of operating capital for the first portion of the year next year, Brad. So, Chad is here, fire chief, do you have any comments?
I don't really. Would have any problems with Salinas, Slin County, being one of-
We're still working on getting the petitions got up, it just takes time to get, get all the people tracked down to get the right ones, so.
But that is, it's-
We are working towards it.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, I don't see a snag being-
Probably 15 would sure clean up the line, so people knew what district they were seeing anyways.
Yes, yes. And this is just simply a $500 budget for 2015 for a little bit of operating expenses. This isn't, they'll have their full budget following year, so.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this public hearing? At this time, I'll close the public hearing for the Dixon County Rural Fire District Number Two Budget for 2015. And this would be an action item that we would need to, is there a motion to adopt this budget?
So, move?
I'll second it.
Got the motion and the second to adopt the budget for the Dixon County Rural Fire District Number Two, this new district that's been established. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we need to sign this, each of us, and there's two places to sign?
Well, there's two, but-
Okay, our next item is another budget hearing, and this is our budget hearing for the Dickinson County Budget for 2015. So, Brad, would you go ahead and provide us with summary remarks on this, please?
Well, after some, another year of long exhausting work, we have come up with a budget for the upcoming year, where we have attempted to be very frugal and manage our expenses again. We have a number of issues that are out of our control, that ultimately are exemptions that were handed to us by the state legislature that we've had to deal with, that equate to several hundred thousand dollars in revenue that we lost on our half, behalf, that is a difficult to deal with, that will continue. That based, that, as well as the increased costs that we're seeing for, for things that we have to purchase, commodities and such, has made it very difficult, but at this point, we've come up with a budget that is workable, and I'd tell Janelle to refer her little presentation, she'd like it for you, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brad has the budget brief there for you to see, and you should have copies of it as well. The first page just kind of gives an overview of our county, a little bit of the history, some of the items that we have in our county, and talks about some of the people that we have, have come from here, like President Eisenhower and Joey Engle. If we move to the second page, that's where we start getting into more of the information. Some quick facts about our county, it's 852,000, it's 852 square miles, I'm losing my paper, sorry. It's going to be one of those days, I can tell. So, yeah, let me move it here, Craig, thanks. An estimated population of 19,609, and that was as of 2013, based off the census. Dickinson County provides services to our citizens 24/7, 365 days, and that includes 911 emergency call center, law enforcement, emergency medical services. We also maintain over 300 miles of paved and gravel roads, and 300 bridges for safe travel for our citizens. We have a civil and criminal court system, we have a 38-bed facility jail, election staff, so you can vote for democracy, motor vehicle registration, we have a transfer station, planning and zoning, so. And all of those services and more are provided through 132 employees through the county, so. And those are organized under elected officials, county commission, county clerk, treasurer, county attorney, register of deeds, sheriff, and then nine other departments which fall under Brad Hallman, the county administrator's purview. 132 staff members, as I said, and you can see the breakdown there. The county also, in this budget, is also providing support to the following organizations: our Central Kansas Free Fair, Central Kansas Mental Health, the Dickinson County Conservation District, Historical Society, Extension Council, OCCK, Tri-County Fair, and New for 2015 as an Economic Development Corporation, so. If we move to the, to the second, or the third page, some of the things that we're working on, we are continuing to pay for a loan through the State of Kansas Revolving Loan Fund for a 40-mile overlay project that occurred in 2013, and that was a $4.1 million loan. 2014 shoulder work from old, on Old Forty from Solomon to Chapman, that was a nine, a $1.9 million budget item, or grant item, 90% of it was grant, 10% was our match. We filed 249 criminal cases in 2013, we replaced 11 culverts in 2011, 20 in 2012, and 18 in 2013, so continuing to maintain our roads is very important to us. A big project that our GIS department completed was the Cemetery Records Project, so it has a backup of records, and it has up-to-date maps, and the public has access to this, under the county's website, under a genealogy search feature, so. If you look at the chart here, this is a quick chart that shows expenditures by function. So, we have public safety at 5.4 million, or 30%, 32% of our budget, and public safety obviously is going to include 911, EMS, sheriff, jail, county attorney, juvenile detention, things like that. The administration at 12% of our budget, or $2 million, is our county commission, the administration department, county counselor, custodial, GIS, human resources budget. The taxation and election, that would be our county clerk, county treasurer, register of deeds, and appraiser on a zoning. Public service are those offices, like the Department of Aging, the coroner, the Noxious Weed Department, health, and the transfer station. The appropriations budget is about 3%, and those are those organizations that I listed earlier, the Conservation District, the Historical Society, the New Economic Development Corporation, the fairs. And then our special funds, that would be our road and bridge fund, bond and interest funds, capital funds, and that's, that's a 31% portion of our budget, or $5.3 million, so. The next two charts we'll go over are revenues and expenditures. Revenues Brad touched on briefly, we have seen some reductions based on new laws by the state legislature. We have reductions to mortgage registration of over 50,000 in estimation, we also have reductions to motor vehicle registrations and the commercial vehicle side. So, you can see the breakdown that we have there, you know, transfer station, we have 525,000 estimated revenue source. Special highway, that comes through a formula that the state provides, at 652,000. Ambulance fees, 600,000. This is our best estimation of where our revenues are going to be for 2015. The bottom chart, we're proposing a 16.9 million dollar budget, and the breakdown shows you- The bottom chart, we're proposing a $16.9 million budget, and the breakdown shows you where those dollars are. We continue to make cuts and reevaluate the programs and the services that we offer every year. We've been making cuts in our budget since 2009. Unfortunately, costs of goods, costs of fuel, services have all increased. We're doing our best to make sure that we still provide the services that our citizens expect. Some of the things included in this budget, the funding of the Economic Development Corporation, the continuing funding or setting aside monies for the Justice Center. We've had an increase to building maintenance. We have a single audit for 2015, for the 2014, but it's included in the 2015 budget because we received over $500,000 in federal funds, and that triggers a single audit for us. Our utilities have increased, our postage. We're estimating a cash carryover of $3.1 million for 2015. That's a steady amount that we've been trying to maintain for the past several years, and we'd like to continue that in the future. This budget also is going to include some capital purchases, a vehicle, computer replacement, lease purchase on the ambulance, a dump truck for the highway department to continue the maintenance programs that we are on. The last page shows a brief overview of the main issue that the commission will be talking about, and that is in regards to sales tax funding for future road and bridge projects. As I've explained, costs of goods are getting higher, the maintenance of the 300-plus miles of road, 300-plus bridges continues to, to go up on a regular basis. And we see this as an opportunity to reduce property tax increases, which is what we would like to do, so. That's a really quick, brief overview of our budget. Does the commission have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any comments or questions from the audience? And kind of the same thing, if you would want to make a comment, just please come to the podium, state your name, and be glad to hear from you.
Well, Mike Townsend with the Economic Development Steering Committee still, not incorporated yet. I wanted just brief comments to thank you for your willing, willingness to invest in the future of the county by way of our group. I understand and appreciate the tough decisions you had to make on your budget. And I appreciate your, your willingness to take care of us taxpayers by making those hard, hard decisions. Third comment that didn't plan on making is, Janelle, it's nice to see you back. That's all I have, just thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions?
Not making a comment, I'm just grabbing a paper. I was with the EDC as well.
Signing in?
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Otherwise, at this time, I'll close the budget hearing. And will entertain any comments from the commission or that of a motion?
Well, I might say we, every year, we spend a lot of time on, on this budget. And I do appreciate Janelle's willingness to keep digging harder and, and like I say, we, the requests are always a little more than what we can afford. And so we keep looking at the things that we think that we can get by with without hurting our service to the, to the people in Dixon County, so. Unfortunately, costs, uncontrollable costs keep going up, and, and so. I'm hoping, and I guess I'll mention this, the reason we are supportive of the economic development is if we can get more evaluation in the county by people moving in or creating industry or just expanding people that are here, you know, when that evaluation goes up, it, it does help us spread that, the taxation, property taxation out. And so we're hoping that, that this will bring us, I know it might take a while, but we're hoping that this will bring us some industries or whatever in the county that, that will increase our evaluation. And it's all based, I, I look at other counties and, you know, I go to meetings with other commissioners and part of one of the counties, their valuation is three times ours, and just a whole lot easier raising money when property tax, when you've got evaluations that, that are like theirs. And like I say, it's, it's a hope we're investing for the future in, in this project.
Well, I think the economic development piece, you know, really is an investment in the future, and it is important. You made your case well in pointing out some of the counties and cities and regions that have intentional efforts to identify and target economic development. They are successful at it, and it is important that we continue to move forward and not only maintain our population, but hopefully grow the population and, and get some job creation out of this. One of the things on the budgets that I appreciate, and I know Laverne mentioned this, you know, I, I thank our elected officials, and I'm not trying to toot our horn, but, but the others in the building here and department heads and those that work for the county. We have some, some employees and people that really serve the county well. And while we look at the budget today, they're out there every day and every week and actually addressing budget issues and trying to look for efficiencies and, and way to provide the services in an efficient manner. And so I, you know, certainly appreciate and salute the work that they do.
Just, just as I said, with the budget, I had a couple of gentlemen that just come back from their farm managers' meetings, and they want to know if the county had done an efficiency, you know, that we're spending money wisely and that we're, you know, getting the best bang. And I said, it's a little different when you're, you know, you can see what, you know, when you're farming, you can see what your input costs are, and I said, with government, it's a lot harder to do. And I talked to Brad about this and stuff, and, and I, you know, I don't know how we could do an economic model that showed that we were spending our money wisely. I mean, it's just hard to do and, and with government. I mean, you're trying to provide services that people need, and, and some they don't see that they need, it's like EMS, sheriff's department. You know, you don't know you need them till you have called them and stuff. So it's, I don't know any way we could do an economic model to see if we're being efficient.
Actually, the last three months of budget process is kind of an efficiency review, you know, and so.
You know, it's, you know, it's what your people want, it's like with the extension, we had another agent last year. There's gonna be some initial costs there, but people wanted the, people I talked to wanted a third agent. So, but, and that's the only way you get is how much your people talk to you about what they want, if they want to kept spending. Then we'll have to make some choices if you don't want the things where they are. That's all I have, Lynn.
Okay. This time, I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the budget.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
We have the motion from Commissioner Chamberlain, and Commissioner Myers gave us the second to adopt this budget of 2015 for Dixon County as presented at our hearing. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've done, too. Thank you, Brad.
Glad to hear better.
Okay. I'll find it. Okay, at this time, we'll have our report from Brad, our county administrator.
Well, as you heard earlier from Martin's report, the department head being showing construction was scheduled to come in and start repairing Key Road, the bad spots down there, they had a delay this week because a milling machine was broken down and waiting on parts. As it stands today, they're scheduled to be in on Monday and start doing that and taking out those bad spots and repaving them. Along the same lines, we have received an email agreement from showing that they're agreeable to chip seal and stripe a 12.1 miles of 1900 make, and I think it's actually a Porsche Jeep, but I'm not keen either. Those 12 miles were determined to be managed from the overlay and had some small holes that were developed in it. And they're in the process of getting bids from vendors to do that at this point, and hopefully we'll get it done here before Coldwell sets in. Our concrete project at the county yard has been put, is done, it's in the process of curing. They definitely came in and got everything ready Monday, they intended to pour in concrete Tuesday. However, the concrete was all planted, we scheduled all the resources for the I-70 project, so they didn't get poured until yesterday, but they did get poured, the forms have been taken off, and we're laying it clear now to the middle of next week. So we're glad to have that completed. I've provided you a copy of the sales tax resolution and questions that Doug gave us for your review, and we anticipate that we'll probably want to schedule that for action here in, in the future so that we can get it to Barb, and she knows how to proceed. We talked a little bit about the K-Camp contract, and that'll be, K-Camp will be coming out with another restabilization agreement for the next three years. We would anticipate receiving that in the next, next month or two.
Brad, you want to just highlight the, you know, add that on record of what they do for us?
Sure, K-Camp is the Kansas County Social Multilane Pool. And that's a, an organization that we belong to, that provides our liability insurance, it's a self-insurance pool. And we belong with, I believe, about 65 other counties in Kansas to self-insure ourselves. We've been with K-Camp, I think, for about 80 years or so. When we, prior to that, we were with a regular insurance company, and when we bid K-Camp years ago, it was a very substantial savings, which we realized for all those years. We also have a very good relationship with K-Camp, working with them, having experienced quite a number of claims over the last couple of years, specifically for hail damage on the courthouse, the county facilities, vehicles and such. And they're extremely good to work with, so. Three years ago, they, they provided us with a rate stabilization agreement that if we were willing to commit to them for three years, which would have been 12, 13, and 14 calendar years, that they would provide us a discount, annual discount to the, or annual rate, which we did engage with them. And I, I don't recall, but I think it was about a $12,000 savings, if I remember right, it's been three years. That agreement will expire at the end of December, and they, they're coming out with everyone to help promote their customers that will start in January, so. I'd been contacted by Doug Smart with Smart Insurance, wanting to know if we were going to consider changing at the end of the year, if he'd be willing to bid that, and in a work session, we had a rate discussion and, and basically agreed that you're satisfied with K-Camp, pleased with the continue with them, so. That's what brings that up, so. Dustin reported to me this morning on his way to Wichita to some training that the planning commission had tentatively approved the Cosette Platte down on 1700 Avenue last night with some conditions. And you can expect to probably see the final platte probably in October on that project, so that's good news. And then the one thing that's not on your list is that you'll probably see in the news, in the employee paper next week, we'll be advertising for bids on a bridge repair at 735 Trail Road. That's, you may remember on the tour, probably don't, but just north of Key Four on Trail Road, we've got a pretty good sized concrete bridge, and we've got some real erosion problems on the back walls of that bridge that need to be addressed. We're putting it out for bids at this point to see what the cost is gonna be, because we honestly don't know. And so that, once we get those costs, then we can plan for the future of getting it repaired, so. I say that with, to inform you that when you see that, don't get alarmed, that we're running something through here that we don't have in the budget, which right now, we don't have any budget, quite honestly, but we need to know what the amount will be to get some bids from the vendors so that we can, we can prepare for in the future. Along the same lines, though, and, and honestly, that is another one of those projects we didn't anticipate, we don't have in our budget, so we'll, we'll need for a little more revenue on the sales tax issue to help keep some of our infrastructure in place, so.
Who's the address?
735, it's just right north of Key Four.
Okay, yeah, I know, I know we're right there, yeah.
It's a big, big concrete bridge.
I remember where, yeah.
The bridge itself's in very good condition, just the back walls are a little bit out, so. Little nature kind of changed direction of the waterfall. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Under notices and communications, I did not receive anything in the mail other than this from the KAC, and it's actually gonna be regarding the conference and delegate selection, which is part of our agenda. Doug, before you got here, we've put on an executive session for attorney-client privilege. But do you have anything for us other than before that?
The 22nd of August is the date that Judge Platte will address those petitions pertaining to the real estate taxes not being paid on those parcels of real estate that we filed to foreclose and cause a sale. Won't be the sale that day, but that's the date that the journal entry will be submitted to the court, who will ask the court to pursue and set that tax sale for this year.
Okay, thank you. Did any of the other commissioners receive any communication written or otherwise that you'd want to bring up at this time?
I will be attending the, the Woodbine Patch Tour, the 26th, I don't know if any of the other commissioners will be attending that. Woodbine.
For what?
Patch Tour, remember the jail.
Well, yeah, I, if that day works for me, I might be attending that also, so. Maybe you ought to clarify that we could be there.
What date was that, Craig?
26th of nine to 3:30, down at Woodbine, it's under Frederick Skoski's place.
Okay, we do not have any resolutions.
We do need to, last week, we said this week we would accept a bid for the Canstep program.
Okay, but is that one, that's the add-on, is that part of the approval of materials for the...
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we do have that on the agenda. So, Doug, we'll come up here in a minute. On the one business I, before we get to those two add-ons to the agenda, or three add-ons, we need to determine the voting delegates and alternates for the KAC conference, and that is November 12th, 13th, and 14th. The actual meeting where the delegates would need to be there, we're allowed one vote for Dickinson County, but they also have requested that we have two alternates. So I would go ahead and make the motion that Craig Chamberlain be our delegate for voting, Laverne Myers our first alternate, and I will serve as second alternate.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, and all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Craig.
What, what were the dates on that meeting?
November 12th, 13th, and 14th. And probably in the meantime, we'll want to confirm, and Brad, you'll be attending that also. We'll want to, you know, confirm our hotel reservations and all that, I think, in place, but when that gets, as that gets closer, we'll take care of that.
I think we already done that.
Yeah, it's always good to check with them and make sure it's still in place, but yeah, it should be. The next item we have, this was an addition, we have a letter of appreciation. And this is going to come from the commission to Mr. and Mrs. Don Lowe of Hope, Kansas. And they have served many years on the commodity distribution in the Woodbine area. And so we wanted to acknowledge them for their past service in that. And I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do send this letter to Mr. and Mrs. Don Lowe.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, we have the second to send this letter, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. There's the letter to sign. The next item we have is the approval of the materials for the bid on the Navarre Canstep program. And of course, we did receive that bid at our last meeting, and, but also we're having it subject to review to make sure that everything was just the way we expected it. And you're smiling, so everything must be okay.
We met earlier this week with the committee in Navarre, and we moved bids, and went over the bid, and discussed the future bid we're gonna have. over the bid and discussed the future bid we're going to have. It'll be like five weeks from today, the 18th of September. We have to have a 30-day waiting period. It's being advertised today for the bid letting.
Okay.
What you see, I'm going to get some, if anybody's interested in it. What you see is the items that we bid, we asked for bids. The Clark Lumber out of Harrington is the only one who submitted a bid. And they were all for basic construction materials. Item four, they had a bid for reinforced steel. Item five is the material to construct an awning attached to the community center for an ambulance shelter. Number six is kitchen cabinets. And number seven is the general building materials. Two-by-fours plywood, sheetrock insulation and that sort of thing. For the total of their bids, comes in at $52,459.88. The, these, these numbers are in line with the budget. And what are, what we're requesting today is based on my recommendation is to award the project of these four items to Clark Lumber Company. Contingent, this information has been sent to the state. Department of Commerce has final say, but it's basically a formality. But we would like to have you approve the awarding of the bid to Clark Lumber for these items contingent on the approval of the state Department of Commerce.
Okay. Are there any questions? I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do accept this bid from Clark Lumber Company Harrington on the items that they did bid contingent on acceptance of review and acceptance of approval from the state of Kansas and Commerce.
I'll second that.
Got it. The motion and the second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We've got work to do on that, but it's.
Well, I guess.
They didn't get started with a lot of the demolition and things like that, but this, these material items available.
Well, what that is, is that's a letter to the Department of Commerce explaining why we only had one bid and that we, why the bid was approved with only one bid. So.
I guess my question is how are we going to, with the next bid process, how are we going to be assured that we're going to get bids on these other items?
Well, you're never assured. But we've talked with a number, we've actually been approached by a number of plumbers, electricians, mechanical people that agree they're too busy to do it this last time. This is, this is kind of the time of year where all their school projects and things that have to be done by the end of the summer. But they just physically don't have time. But this, they're saying that with this thing, bid, bid again the 18th of September, they're interested in it now and they've got the time to look to it. And there's some guys who just didn't either know about it or whatever. We sent out, I'm guessing, close to 30 individual invitations. We just didn't rely on, put that in the newspaper. But we sent it out to quite a few of the contractors in the area and licensed trades. So, we'll do some, we'll do some follow-up here as the weeks go on to make sure that we're going to give it the best shot we can to get these items covered.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
This time, the only other item before adjournment on the, on the agenda was added on for an executive session. This will be for attorney-client privilege. It will be for 10 minutes. And will include our administrator, the county commissioners, and our attorney. And I'd go ahead and move that we go into executive session at 12:18.
Second.
We have the motion and the second to go into executive session at 12:18 for 10 minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It'll take a minute.